All right, that's six o'clock. We're going to open up July first, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Lot on the agenda tonight, so we'll try to be quick. Uh, we have continuation of site plan review for, uh, Faria Realty Trust, six twenty-five Main Street and thirteen dash fifteen Water Street.
Steven Philbin, I represent the owners of the property. Chris Anderson at Henning Engineering is here also. And the building owners.
It's a continuation.
I don't believe Mr. Busno was here at the time that we first came before the board. Uh, but the plans that were presented at that time is taking a combination of two lots, the lot on Water Street where Brennan's Restaurant used to be, Red McNally's Lounge used to be, uh, as well as the red brick building at six twenty-five Main Street. The original proposal was to put a commercial building on the Water Street lot. But after we met with the planning board at that time, because of the twelve-foot right-of-way, which was the only access in and out of this property, uh, the board was suggesting that we also have an exit and entry way onto Water Street. Uh, Mr. Anderson has been working with the architects and also with the traffic people. Uh, and as a result, what we're proposing now has drastically changed. In fact, that the commercial building is now eliminated. It's eliminated because of the traffic it would cause coming off and onto the property and the parking spaces that were needed, plus the parking spaces that would be needed for the residential units as well.
So, not to, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Philbin, but you're talking about eliminating the thirteen fifteen, thirteen dash fifteen Water Street building that you proposed?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's gone at this point. Uh, it was also discussion as to whether it was going to be one bedroom or two-bedroom units in the, uh, structures that we're going to be using for residential, uh, space. Again, by going with one-bedroom units, what we do is open up apartments so that they're at least more affordable. And also, we're not having children in a congested area. Uh, one-bedroom units are usually going to be one person or two people. Uh, it will reduce the, the traffic flow as well. Uh, so, Mr. Anderson is going to walk you through what's being proposed at this point. But this seems to be the only viable use for the lot and the, the use that makes sense of all the different variations that we've gone through over the last four or five months.
Okay.
So, Mr. Anderson?
So, um, as Mr. Philbin just kind of reviewed, um, what we've done is, uh, let's screen here. Um, some of the major components that have changed, um, thus far is that we've, uh, said it's eliminated with the building, uh, in lieu of providing a secondary exit for us off of Water Street. Um, the existing mill structure will remain intact as was originally intended. And in lieu of the actual, uh, full demolition of that steel structure, is the intent to demolish the superstructure and leave the foundation intact and constructing potentially an extension of that mill structure, uh, maintaining the same architectural feel as that structure or building entirely.
Wait a minute, isn't that by me again?
So...
With the, the steel structure in the back where the welding shop is now?
That's all coming down. And on top of that, existing foundation, which is a very robust system already, will construct a new structure, uh, that'll mimic the, uh, mill style of the original structures. We'll be providing on the ground floor, hopefully, the total of any parking spaces that the people will be able to provide into. And the subsequent second and third floors, if you will, will be the residential units. Uh, right now, we're showing a total of nine units in that structure. Uh, it can actually be, uh, the post seven, uh, existing structure itself. Uh, the draw will extend along the lane and then exit out on Water Street. Uh, we'll add additional, uh, apartment, uh, along that lane as well. Maintain this area more as an open space, uh, area to provide additional basements on Water Street and the actual site itself. Uh, we are, uh, right now, just looking to get initial feedback from the board, uh, make sure this is palatable and amenable to them. So, make sure, so that we can progress the actual architectural and site development on the other documents per, uh, our request.
So, reasonable plan here for us? Dean? No.
So, we're showing this in this form because of such a significant transition. Correct, so because it was such a significant change from the original development, we want to come before the board. Make sure we're on the right path, if you will, to make sure that what we're doing makes sense to the board of town and that we're not going out on some loss.
Well, we have a total of sixteen units now.
Sixteen units.
One bedrooms?
One bedrooms. Uh, we think there is a possibility we might be able to gain that extra parking space somewhere in the final design. So, there could be, could be a potential, we can increase it to seventeen units. Uh, originally proposed was twenty-one, so we are dropping units as part of this.
The twenty plus the commercial space on Water Street, that's gone too. Yeah. No commercial space on Water Street at all, simply the first floor of the existing building right now. That's the only commercial space that'll be in this area at all.
Now, is that, are you showing, are you going to be able to go out onto Water Street? Are you going to have a secondary exit there? I, I really can't see it from here, so...
Yes, sir, so this would be the secondary, uh, exit off of Water Street.
Yeah, I think entrance only, exit on Water only, right turn.
So, I mean, that the screen works, right, right turn out? So, that people can still hit the light when they're not crossing the motor, it's a trap above the main.
Yeah, that should be, that means should be entrance only, exit on Water Street, right turn. How many square feet of green space did you have there, Paul?
Um, it's probably about eighty by forty, something around that.
Yeah, you're going down the right road.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I mean, I would, I'd like this plan a lot better than the last one. Providing in and out and the only thing that I'm going to ask is that you guys maybe get some input from the traffic committee because the traffic committee has been, they've had some input on some other projects and they're always saying that they've been left out and this and that. So, I would get some input on them of, of what they want and think they need down there because it's a very busy intersection.
Mr. D'Amico on Main Street, you said entrance only or exit only?
Should be entrance only on Main, I believe. And exit on Water with the right turn only, so we're not going into that intersection. Because it backed up there like a son of a gun anyway.
Absolutely. So, you need anything else?
Just more input to get anything else to say.
Where's the dumpster?
Uh, it's located specifically at the end of the long run.
Yeah.
All right. They got a place to get rid of the snow and stuff.
I don't know if they're going to leave that green space.
Question for you, Paul?
Uh, we're going in the right direction.
Any, uh, comments from the public? Sir?
Would you niggard try in fifty-six Prescott Street here in town? I was curious with nineteen units and the commercial space, how many parking spots would we, uh, provide?
I don't think it's nineteen.
Sixteen units.
Sixteen in. Parking spots.
Uh, we provide a total of twenty-one parking spaces.
Do you need anything more, Mr. Philbin?
Just that we request that the hearing be continued. We don't expect to be complete with everything in one month. We can go month to month.
That's fine, I mean, it was, we had quite a lapse in between.
We've had a big lapse.
A lapse last time, so that, that was my concern, so... Good to see you guys going in the right direction and I guess we'll see you at the next meeting. Or if not, please have a contin, request for continuance.
Request a continuance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have to vote on that? Do we have to vote on the continuance?
Um, moving on, new business to the site plan review, forty-five Prescott Street. Making motion.
Motion away of the reading, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Hello?
Good evening. Proceed.
Yeah?
I heard the waving of the, reading. Uh, so, Bill O'Neill here for, uh, property owner at forty-five Prescott Street. Alan Roseberry is the owner. You may know him, uh, he owns several buildings in town. Uh, probably the, the nicest project that he did was his own home where he bought the, uh, the old Hulk property on the corner of School Street and Pleasant Street, rebuilt the garage, uh, the barn, uh, really made it a very attractive property. So, he recently purchased the, uh, what used to be the block property on Prescott Street. I have a bunch of pictures to share.
Thank you. So, uh...
That's what the house looks like with all the trees cut down, huh?
I know, a little different, huh? Never seen it before.
I know. So, these pictures illustrate, as you recited, uh, Paul, that what the house looks like without all the trees. Uh, and as you thumb through, there's some really, some nice pictures of, uh, an old structure, a big carriage house, a large front porch, some beautiful woodwork inside. And, uh, what Alan's proposing to do is to make this a, a four-family house. I know he came a number of years ago, he was trying to make it larger and he got the direct reading from the board that that was, uh, too many. But he has...
Well, I think he came before, I think it was eight?
Seven.
Seven.
And, um, so, you know, he got the message and, uh, I would point out that, that right in that immediate area, there are eight two families, three, eleven three families and six four families right up in that, that whole section. I think what, uh, Mr. Roseberry has talked for is that he would maintain the integrity of the building, make it look the way it is. The carriage house would have that same look outside, although there are garage doors, but those would be a facade where there's, there's actually an apartment inside. The apartments would be, uh, the smallest apartment would be eleven hundred square feet and the others, you know, are, are much bigger. Uh, as far as the details, uh, nobody better than Alan to describe everything, but, uh, looking at the zoning bylaw, uh, section seventy-three-ten is to support the preservation and protection of the, and the architectural integrity that historic residential structures in the town. Put them, allow an interior conversion of the four area to two or multifamily housing, uh, increasing, thereby increasing the financial viability of the structures. So, again, I would say that you have the ability to see some great workmanship that he has done, uh, on his own home. Uh, he's converting the building down, uh, across from the new, I'll say, Wendy's or Starbucks. And, uh, he does quality work. He owns a, a company that installs sprinkler systems, so the sprinkler system is not an issue and that is part of the plan, uh, for this, this structure. Uh, but the nicest part about it, he would restore this to its, uh, let's say, its grandeur when it was, uh, a newer home and, uh, provide, I mean, he has plenty of parking, but, uh, he has probably enough for twice the amount of required parking, but he'd like to have more lawn there, so it gives the appearance like it's a, uh, a residential area, not a, a big apartment building. So, at, at that point, I'll, I'll stop and, and, uh, Alan can sort of give all of the details. But as you can see, there's a lot to work with and he would look to maintain all of that great woodwork and, uh, and the structure and the scalloped, um, shakes at the top of the, the building and the hoopla on top of the, the, uh, carriage house. So, Alan?
Yeah, so I, uh, there's some preliminary, um, you know, schematic sketches of the layout of the building and, you know, they're all two-bedroom, um, you know, I wanted to keep them. I didn't want to have more than two bedrooms.
What's it now, is it a two-family now?
It's a two-family now.
It's a two, so what were they, four bedrooms in each apartment?
Four bedrooms in each apartment and the carriage house was just, you know, truly just a carriage house.
Okay.
A two-story carriage house.
What's the plan?
So, be four units, uh, four two-bedroom units. Three of them would be about eighteen hundred square feet and then the last one would be about twelve hundred square feet.
Carriage house is going to be what?
That would be about eighteen hundred square feet, two-bedroom.
What's the total square footage?
Uh, just under eight thousand square feet.
Are you going to bring a complete rendering of the building before? Is the plan, will you bring a complete rendering of the building going to look like in the end?
It's exactly...
I mean, it's kind of, I think we should require that as a board anyway because the part of the bylaw is to make sure that it stays the way it is.
Yeah.
Well, I have the, what you see now is what it's going to be when it's done. It's going to look exactly the same, just, uh, it's, it's, it's a dingy white now and it's just going to be a lighter, lighter blue, but it, what you see now is exactly what it's going to be.
The footprint of the building is not going to change.
No, there's going to no, be no exterior stairs. What you see now is exactly what it's going to be.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, my biggest is the, the lot size is my, you know...
I think it's a, it's a lot better than seven units and it's...
Better than what?
It's a lot better than once. It'll help out the neighborhood, I think. I'm just saying, Derek, I think it's a good idea. Any, uh, any comments from the public? If you, if you have a comment, just state your name and your address, please. Sir?
Thank you, board. Uh, Rich Ryan in fifty-six Prescott Street, lived directly across, uh, diagonal across from the property. Uh, with the four units, two bedrooms apiece, uh, you mentioned, uh, parking, uh, associated with that. How many parking spaces are proposed under the current plan?
He's a ten.
There would be ten parking spaces. There's room for more, but again, the, the idea would be keep more lawn, uh, but it could be expanded.
And it needs to be regulated.
Oh, and that's wonderful because, uh, green space is good, but, uh, spillover parking on the roadway would be a nuisance. And so, we're hoping that that wouldn't happen with the generation associated with this size of a project as I've had in prior, uh, proposals for the site. It looks great, I commend the work, wish the ownership was here to hear that and I'm sure you'll cast that on to them. Uh, but a lot to do, uh, but it's been a very disruptive in the neighborhood and all the exterior work being done now, but I'm sure to be eager to get to the inside at some point, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
And last, fifty-six Prescott Street. I was wondering if you could repeat the, uh, family, not numbers, the unit numbers and the abutting houses you listed earlier? Because I think I heard a couple mistakes.
Well, according to, uh, Mr. Roseberry's research, that in the immediate area, there are eight two families, eleven three families and six four families. I, I, is that...
Is that what you're asking, Paul?
Well, yeah, because I know that, I'm not sure what the whole area he's talking about is, but, um, I know that across the street in the pink house is one family. And then, there's more like one families around, uh, this lot than, uh, I heard. One family next door, one family across the street. It's twenty-six Prescott Street is also one family, the gray house diagonal to you.
Well, um, I'm not to, not to interrupt you, but I'm sure the applicant got his information from the tax assessor's office and worked off the, she's probably for the whole neighborhood, I'm assuming.
In a one-block radius.
The one, one-block radius, so it's not just the houses on Prescott Street.
Right, right. And the house is behind them too. But I was, the numbers surprised me, that there were eight one-family houses. Okay, I'll just, I'll check it out.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. O'Neill?
No, I had said six, there are eight two families, six four families. The house right to, adjacent to it on the right, which I think used to be owned by Elaine Brillhart.
Yes.
That's a eight-four family.
Yeah.
And with all due respect, I would think this, this will, you know, far exceed the, uh, curb appeal of, of that property and, uh, maybe somebody will, will bring that to, back to life. But, um, again, Mr. Roseberry has a proven record in the town. He can ride around and see the properties that he is, he's improved. One thing that I, I, I did ask...
Cutting the trees down was an improvement.
One thing that, from the outside, I do think that the wall, the picture of the porch that has the wall, the walled up, probably going to be replaced with spindles or something more.
Back to the original.
Yeah. So, but other than that, the structure would be the same. In fact, the garage doors on the carriage house, they're going to have a, a door, uh, appearance, but they will not be functional.
Any other public comment? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I can, I can, I got one more thing. In order, um, the only thing, Mr. O'Neill, I, I would like to see if we could add two more parking spaces.
Two more, so a total of twelve?
To a total of twelve.
Sure.
Just, just, you can never have enough parking spaces.
They can park on the lawn when there's a party.
And the formal motion on the table?
What's that?
Motion on the table to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Motion approved, forty-five Prescott Street LLC Site Plan Review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you write the decision, Mr. O'Neill?
Sure.
Or get back and do it, sign it at the next meeting?
Sure. So, the, the representation, the external will be for all intensive purposes, what is there now or restored back to what was in keeping with the times when the property was constructed?
Yep.
Twelve parking spaces.
Twelve.
Sprinkler.
Sprinkler, probably with the fire alarm.
Yep. Sure, thank you.
All right, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
That being said, a site plan review for Wachusett Cannabis Inc.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second. Hello?
Hello. Scott Rubin, seventy-one Legion Parkway, third floor, Broughton, Mass. This is Jared Patel from Tree Craig Drive, Clinton, Massachusetts.
From where?
Uh, Tree Craig Drive, Clinton.
Craig Drive, okay.
Yes. Uh, again, we were informally before the board back in May.
Yep.
Where we, uh...
Sorry about last month, we had a little bit of a problem.
That's okay. No problem whatsoever. Again, we had requested that the board accept the previous plans on file, which the board was kind enough to do for us. Uh, again, we're here as, uh, trying to take over the space formerly occupied by Tyka Green. This is four-seventy Main Street, right down the street from here. We're literally just looking to replace the exact same, same space. We're not making any renovations, no changes whatsoever to the, to the current facility. Uh, we are not doing cultivation. I believe the last special permit included cultivation.
Yeah, it's just going to be retail.
Retail and product manufacturing. There is a, there is a lab in the, in the back as well. So, uh, we're reducing the, certainly the amount of use of the building previously. Uh, signage, we're just going to use the existing signage that's already on, on site, uh, Mr. Chairman. And so, uh, the, just by way of short background, I guess, the initial special permit was issued to Tyka back in September of two thousand eighteen. Uh, they got this certificate of occupancy and actually opened in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. And unfortunately for them, closed, uh, their facilities in April of two thousand twenty-four. We, we do have a lease with the, uh, with the landlord who's also here as well. Um, and again, no proposed changes to this site whatsoever. I can add, when I was, we were actually at the site earlier tonight, they've actually opened up, uh, a portion that's closest to the, to Main Street for, for additional parking. They cleared out some brush, which is nice. So, I think we're going to be adding, I'd have to ask the landlord exactly how many spaces will be up there, but there'll be some additional spaces that will be obviously on the Main Street side. I'm going to keep open the, uh, uh, the back end of that because that's obviously the, uh, the, the exit, uh, for, for our, um, it's one-way traffic. You come in off of Main and go out, um, back out and circulate back through the...
Do we have, um, any kind of drawing for your traffic flow that you're suggesting or...
I don't have any changes of any kind that were already on file.
Well, since...
The chairman, right. We have the one change we have.
Since, since, uh, Tyka, when, uh, the, the last, last marijuana retail place was in there.
Yeah.
And then the mill opened in back, so there's a little bit of some traffic congestion down there. I'm, I'm sure you noticed it when you were down there.
Wasn't really any, not earlier tonight when I was just there, but I haven't been there when the mill's been operational. But my understanding is, is that our curb cut, which is right at the center of the building, we're not coming in off, down towards the, the bottom of the hill. We come in, our entrance is pretty much right at the, uh, right at the entrance of our facility itself, which has the, uh, has the ramp that goes up to the building for our entrance. The front of the building is occupied by, by others. We're in the back of the building. So, our traffic flow will be onto the site off of Main and then everybody has to go out, up past the, up to the hill, take a left and come back out onto Main as well. That's the, that's essentially the only circulation that we would have, the one-way in and one-way out.
So, you're coming in off of Union Street?
No, no, I think it's coming in off of Main.
It's a little further up.
Yeah, right way there.
The interest on Main, we're worried about.
Down the other, down the further end?
Yeah, we asked you to address that problem.
No, it wasn't down that way.
But I think we're going to attach it. I think this board has an obligation to attach it to this site plan permit. It's closure of that. Whether it be a breakaway gate that the fire department can get through or whatever, because it is still the same.
We did address that with these owners.
And if they want to rent to the Wachusett Cannabis Inc., they're going to have to agree to put the gate, a breakaway gate, so the fire department's happy. Something.
Let's, this is, I get a letter from the fire chief.
Yeah, I had asked for any comments. I did, I didn't get a copy of any comments, unfortunately.
This has been an ongoing issue that...
Maybe the landlord, I think the landlord's here, so it'd be helpful to have him comment.
Yeah, it's just been kind of...
You know, they can do all that and put a gate in that the fire department can get through.
Can't they get, get the fire department?
This is, uh, I think Franklin Hardy.
Yeah.
Scott Rubin, nice to meet you. So, he's the, he's our landlord, he's kind enough to be here.
Franklin.
So...
The last time I had met Franklin, I had met with him and Mr. Cunningham down there.
Yeah.
And we were, they were going to put a gate in.
Now, the gate would be where?
Afterwards, the gate changed. So, and now it's just, it's turned into a total traffic mess down there. And like I said, applicant earlier, I'm getting stuff from the traffic committee, I'm getting stuff from this person, get that person, there was an accident down there yesterday, so...
So, which, which...
We're kind of caught in the middle here, so we're going to...
We did, we closed off to, we can't exit. We put signs saying no exit, we put arrows coming into this place and...
That ain't working. Because I just seen an accident there.
Nobody's paying attention to it.
Twice a day, I see people come flying out of there. You got to gate it or you, that's it.
Okay, we'll, we'll...
That's it.
So, a gate for, for entrance only?
I think I can talk to the chief about this too.
Franklin, after we're done with this applicant, um, Cunningham, the Cunningham group is supposed to be here tonight. Can you stick around? Because I have a letter from the fire chief that I want to share with everybody down there. And we're going to hash this out tonight and get this, get this fixed, okay?
Sure. Yeah, if the entrance is the one that's further down the hill, that's not, that is not our, we don't even have access.
And then, this is out, this is enormous. It's not going to do this.
They have their own separate entrance.
Yep, I know where it is. You're right.
So it doesn't affect the cannabis business at all. There's plenty of parking there. We're adding additional 14 spaces.
I realize it doesn't affect the cannabis business, Mr. Chairman, but this is one of the only ways that we can hold people's feet to the fire after the fact.
I know.
All right, that's all I'm saying. Just so it's an issue six months from now, I could say.
Told you so. Okay, so Franklin, if you could stick around--
We'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Any comment from the public? Sir? Uh, me?
Oh, we would add in Highlandburg Street. Just some questions. What is going to be the production within the lab? Is that going to be anything involving propane and methane at high pressures? Are certain productions in labs going to range from concentrate to DAP pens? Or just what would be the extent of the lab production?
Yes, so it would be oil production. Currently, the equipment has the means for CO2 extraction.
Okay.
But we would be pursuing other, you know, solvents to make extracts such as concentrates and oil.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll see you back.
Anybody else? Any comments from the board?
You know my bill.
Yeah. We're going to get a kind of--
No problem.
Make a motion to approve. Oh. It's okay. That's it. I have no motion for it.
Well, you know, you know my attitude, but if we, if the fire department can handle this, I got complete, I got complete support in the fire department to close that off.
We're going to, we're going to address it at the end of the meeting.
Right, but I mean, to pass this, we're kind of holding him hostage, but let's go ahead. If we think the fire department is going to be in control. If you feel safe about that, I feel safe about it.
I'll make a motion. We transfer it, okay, right with the understanding that gate is adjusted, situation adjusted.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you. We won't stick around, but we'll talk-- We'll talk to Mr. Hardy.
He's going to write the decision.
I'm sorry?
I will.
Okay.
Some of the, I didn't, I didn't really mention at the hearing, there's some conditions that were in the old SP that really don't, it's not new construction, it don't apply, so if you want to keep them in, we'll take them, but--
I'll review it.
Yeah, they don't.
Lordis has your phone number, correct?
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
All right, with that being said, site plan review, special permit, request to waive resplendent real estate development. 830-894 Main Street.
Just a question we can make?
Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Matt Echols with Fletcher Tilton on behalf of the applicant. We're here, as mentioned, for 830-894 Main Street in Clinton. As you know, we've appeared before you a few times before. We're seeking one additional modification to the site plan, which we'll go through in greater detail. But first, I'm going to introduce Dennis from Yaco to just give a little bit of background on him and the public.
Good evening, my name is Dennis Darbo. I'm the Vice President of Property Development for Yaco Energy. Family-run business, been in operation since the early 90s. The owners come from Sierra Leone. They escaped the civil war that was there back in the late 80s. They came here with just what they had in their pockets. And now they own and operate 17 gas station convenience stores. They are very well-respected in the community. Closest one to here is Boylston on Shrewsbury Street. That's their operation, at five in Worcester. The one we just opened in Worcester is going to be featured. It's a Citgo branded site. It's going to be featured in their national campaign, because it's the nicest store that Citgo has in the portfolio. So we do everything top-notch, first-class, or we don't do it at all, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Dennis. So just to expand a little bit, so obviously, we have a new operator, Yaco, was previously New World Gas. And with that came a couple of changes that we're seeking your approval for, for tonight in this modified site plan. The first that I'll point out, if you look towards the top right of the plan before you, which is the APD page, you'll see what appears to be a little bit of a wing or an arm coming off the right side. So previously, the building was approved for approximately 3,000 square feet. That additional arm would provide an extra 540 square feet, which is still somewhat below the average model for a business of this type, but it's certainly something that we can make work with. It doesn't change anything in terms of the zoning approvals. You'll see that the rear goes up to the rear setback required. We did previously get zoning relief for rear yard setback, but that's not altered by this at all. We stayed within the setbacks. We're also seeking to go with Yaco's more traditional style of design, which you can see an example of in the elevations. I will point out, this has some dedicated signage here. We're not seeking any changes to the signage as previously approved. I'll take that back. I believe we approved for 27 and a half square feet for the main sign. You're allowed up to 32, so we may go up to the 32, but despite seeing three signs on this elevation, that's just a conceptual, kind of typical prototype. So we're not seeking any additional relief in terms of signage for that. In terms of how everything will function, it'll be exactly the same as previously approved. We still have two curb cuts coming in off this site, and then you're able to traverse throughout the whole site. Again, we have Starbucks on the far left, Valvoline next, a Chase Bank, and then a Wendy's. And then again, this use as a gas station convenience market is staying the same. It's just the operator and some of the square footage that's changing. Based on the zoning code, we are required to have one additional parking space for that 540 extra square feet. We already had surplus parking for this site, so we are providing that already, so we don't need any additional relief. With that, we're also tonight, on a separate matter, seeking an A and R. I'm sure we'll take that up on a second call. But with that, we're happy to pause and take any questions the board might have about this request.
So it's just that little bump out on the building?
Correct, yes.
A lot of paper for a little minor change.
We attempted to come last month for potential administrative, but obviously, once that got kicked, we decided to do it, a full filing, just to make sure we were covered. And as I'm sure the board's aware, the whole building's been razed. This project is going full steam ahead. It's just one last modification.
I, it's crazy.
John?
Scott.
Wait, to close, to make a motion to approve?
I hope so.
Any comment from the public?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second. All in favor?
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor? There's only one thing down there. The other day, I was leaving CVS, and your gate on the side next to CVS, can we do something to move that back? Because it blocks, it blocks the sidewalk, and you actually have to pull up almost onto Main Street to get out. You can't see, somebody's going to get hit down there.
Absolutely, thanks for putting that to my attention.
If you could, you know what I mean?
Scientist comes on the left pulling out--
Yes. If you could do something with it, I think it'd be pretty helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And you want to take up the A and R later call, or?
Um, I might as well do it now, since you're up here.
Okay.
Nice job on the dust control, by the way.
We do have four topics here, plus the A and R. So just for the record, this just memorializes what we've obviously put in front of you these past few months, splitting the parcel into five separate lots. Obviously, going from left to right, we have the five separate buildings.
You don't have a MyLife marker for the thing, do you?
I don't.
I missed one. Preached of wire.
If everything goes well, wouldn't you plan on opening up like Wendy's and residence?
The buildings should be completed this fall, October, November, roughly. They start seeing COs.
Yeah.
And you know, probably after that.
With that being said, preliminary subdivision, Megan Downing, 190 R Berlin Street and 11 Lindberg Street, Clinton, Mass. Somebody made motion to approve.
Yeah, just looking, hold on.
All in favor? Aye.
Good afternoon. My name is Megan Downing. I'm a local architect and co-founder of Emerald Design Builds. And this is Amanda Lombardo, a team member of ours. We're here this afternoon on behalf of our client Nancy Warren and the property owner. We're looking to do a subdivision on these two parcels in question, 190 R Berlin and 11 Lindberg. We're here for a preliminary review from the board. We're presenting this preliminary subdivision concept under the Town of Clinton's Flexible Development Zoning Bylaw, which is designed to encourage more thoughtful land use and design while still complying with the subdivision regulations. We understand this process allows for early feedback from the board before formal engineering is completed, so we value the opportunity to present it at this stage. The project involves a combination of two adjacent parcels, 190 R Berlin and 11 Lindberg, totaling approximately 2.15 acres. We're proposing four duplex buildings for a total of eight residential condos. Each lot will average around 7,000 square feet, and each unit will include a 1,000-square-foot footprint, including a second floor and finished basement, for a total living area of about 3,000 square feet. All units are planned as two-bedroom homes. Access to the site will be via a newly constructed public roadway, designed in accordance with the town's standards. All lots will front this new road. Importantly, our proposal includes modification of standard lot size and frontage requirements as permitted under Section 7150 of the zoning bylaw. These dimensional adjustments are intended to support better site planning and more efficient land use. As required under 7151, all lots with produced area or frontage will be located on the new subdivision road, not existing public streets. The Flexible Development Bylaw outlines a number of planning goals, and we believe this proposal aligns well with them. We have four points. One, we're preserving a portion of the site as open space, and that number is 44% currently, retaining mature trees and proposing a small park or playground, which supports both scenic and recreational goals. Number two, the architectural design will reflect a surrounding neighborhood character while offering slightly elevated curb appeal to enhance the streetscape, supporting thoughtful building sitting and neighborhood continuity. Three, the condensed layout supports efficient utility connections, which promotes economical infrastructure planning and maintenance. And four, by offering modest two-bedroom homes in a well-planned neighborhood, we contribute to a more diverse housing stock in Clinton. There's a strong and growing demand for housing options that support young families, especially those seeking to settle in Clinton for its schools, community, and small-town character. We believe this development responds thoughtfully to that need. From an infrastructure standpoint, we anticipate connections to municipal sewer and water. We've also included a placeholder detention basin to accommodate potential stormwater needs subject to refinement during engineered design. Once we receive preliminary support from the board, which we hope to achieve tonight, we'll engage a civil engineer to carry out full drainage analysis and final site design. We see this as a responsible, community-oriented project that reflects the intent of Clinton's flexible development provisions, balancing housing opportunity, open space preservation, and efficient site design. Thank you for your consideration.
It'll be open in a minute for public comment.
Okay, I'm just ready. Can I come up and look at--
Absolutely, come on up.
That's okay, that's okay. Sorry, I'm a little quiet. Um, yeah, we're good. We'll start with them and then you can rotate us.
I know. Thank you.
Glad you can see that.
Looks like your road coming in between 21 feet.
So yeah, because the center line of the road is the property one.
21. Okay, who to open it up? Douglas, anything?
How many duplexes are in the area? It's my question.
Great question. We could definitely collect that information for him if you're looking for maybe like a.
I don't think there's any on Lindberg Street, correct?
Not directly.
But they might be, I think there are some over on Candace.
I mean, up the road on Berlin Street, there's a little condo development. It's obviously a larger scale than this, but there are also condos in the area.
I think those are duplexes too, I think.
There's four by now, Candace.
Yeah. John Anthony? Tom?
Which one plan are they looking at? We did three separate plans.
It's three separate plans, Fisher. They're trying to get input back from the board on which plan would be the most.
Hopefully to help clarify, we're definitely aiming for the four here.
Of course you are, because it's the most amount of units.
Yes.
I'm telling you, that's probably a pipe dream in the R2 district, you know, the flex.
I'm gonna go out on a limb this day. The four, I'm not for. The three, no. Two, I would think about. Because it's consistent with what's in the neighborhood. And even that, you know. And I know there's probably a lot of feedback from the butters and neighbors and everything else. But on one hand, you have the neighbors' concerns, but you also have what the neighbors have to think about. This person's owned that lot for a lot of years, they've been paying taxes on it. And what they're basically trying to do is within our regulations and the zoning book. So we're trying to get to a happy medium somewhere, so.
Mr. Chairman, I heard in the comments about the size of the buildings. You sounded like you're only finishing the first floor.
No, we would be finishing the first floor, a second floor, and a basement.
And within that, there's only two bedrooms?
Correct.
And that's going to be 3,000 square feet?
We're assuming a 1,000 square foot footprint. Maybe the second floor is a little bit condensed if there's new walls or something, but that was just a reference.
I mean, that's, you know, that's quite the size for just two bedrooms. I could see people sneaking in on the bedrooms down the road.
Is it parking under? No?
Nope, we had parking situated between the units.
Okay, yeah, I see that. Okay, open it up to a public comment. Your naming address, please.
Christine Graves, McGrath, 190 Berlin Street. Owner for 21 years. A long time ago, when I bought the property, there was, over the years, talk of putting places back there. There was never enough frontage where the tribe, I don't know how magically there's enough frontage in the exact same place on Lindberg Street. I heard, I apologize, I didn't hear a word you said reading that. So if I could get a copy of that, I heard the word playground. That's a liability for budding properties. I, you know, we've lived there a long time. Also, my property goes way back to almost where your road would be. Would you put up a fence? Would my trees still stay there? Lots of concerns.
The trees would stay there. To answer that question, there is a 50-foot buffer zone requirement from all property lines, so that all of that would be maintained, all vegetation would be maintained.
But it wasn't there years ago. Land didn't grow, so I'm just curious to how there is enough land.
In terms of the frontage question?
Yeah.
Yep, so with the flexible development part of the zoning by law.
Which is what we read and we don't even know what that is.
So. Do you want me to turn this? Sure, yeah, you can turn it. I can't tell you exactly how long it's been in the zoning bylaws, but it's there. And essentially adding the new road is what creates the frontage for the four new footprints that we would be proposing.
I'll get to it, but I'm trying to answer his first question.
And regarding the playground, there is a requirement for open space on the lot. So playground was just one of the thoughts that came to mind in terms of the area that would remain open.
And would you have that off-fence to it so the children would stay on that?
I mean, it could be, it could not be a playground. These are just initial ideas for the preliminary review. All of that would be.
I ask because when my children grow up, we could cut right through to that property on Candace Street. The two-bedroom property there. So I know that, and, you know, things that happen. We had kids come over and play when we weren't there. So that's, I'm just going by experience.
I mean, if what helps get the approval is maybe just an open area with some benches, you know, we're open to that idea as well. But open space is required on the lot for flexible development.
Tess Percy, 11 Lindberg. I'm just curious about is there a between water and sewer where you have subject listed there on water and lots?
Oh, are you looking at the 121 area you had before? I think that may just be a typo in the text. It should not say subject systems there, that's an adjacent parcel.
So you have nothing actually to do with that lot, correct?
No, 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 no. I think that's just a technical.
So it will be town water, water and sewer. So I wonder, will there be any last one, you know?
Oh, not that we've expected. I mean, Emerald Design, I'm an architect and Emerald Design Builds does have a construction side as well. So we, you know, review that internally with the engineer that we get involved and whatever soil testing is conducted, that'll help us determine what we need to do.
Now, I just have a question for the plan. Do we not have to have separate entrance and exit for safety reasons?
No, they meet the requirements with this. As long as they have, if you saw at the end of the plan, that circle, there's a turnaround for emergency vehicles. And that's wide enough, designed wide enough to be for a fire truck to turn around in, so.
My name is Mona Percy. I'm representing the Paul Percy Trust. And I don't understand from where this lets our property, how that's 50-foot frontage to the road. You're putting in a road right next to our property. How it that, it's not 50 feet wide, is it? It's not, the parcel itself is not 50 feet wide.
So based.
So where's my 50-foot buffer?
I believe it was based on the subdivision regulations. It's either in the flexible development section or the zoning, sorry, subdivision regulations, that the road was allowed to overlay with the buffer. It's the buildings that are not allowed to be within the buffer.
Oh, I see. So I can have your road like right against my driveway?
Hi, I'm David Hall, I live on 22 Candace Street. I've been there 27 years and I have a lot of wedge in my backyard. And it butts right in the backyard of your new buildings. So I'm not quite sure if you understand that there's a lot of rock up there. And my question to you is, my backyard's gonna look right into their backyards. And if you've been on that property, you see it's a big, steep up to your location. Why couldn't the buildings be over there and the road against me? Like, why do I have to look at these buildings when there's nothing on the other side of that road? Is there a reason why you place those buildings right there and not the opposite side?
Yeah, the reason that we started with this design is because, as you're probably familiar, the grading slopes down a little bit this way. And so the construction of both the road and the buildings would be more efficient if we kept the road flat on the higher area and then did sort of like a walkout basement for the buildings on the lower side.
So is it saying it's draining to my backyard?
Nothing, it's just going to an adjacent.
And how far is it your backyard, tenant's backyard to my property? How much footage is gonna be there?
A minimum of 50 feet.
There's not much room back there, so I don't know how you're getting all these buffers because there's not much room back there. So it's been my backyard view for 27 years. And I also go home childcare in my backyard, so I'm not sure there's going to be rentals or you can sell them.
The plan was for selling them as condos.
Okay, because they really can't. Sex offenders really shouldn't be anywhere near my home. And if you people ask, is there gonna be any kind of like barriers or fences? Because I don't want people going into my backyard that are living there. I don't need to have any animals. I don't know if you're gonna have an upstairs there, but that's free access. I don't know if they're gonna have top dogs.
No, I mean, in terms of trash, all of that, you know, the logistics would need to be worked out. But the assumption is it would be like any other home, you put your trash barrel up by the end of the road, they can come pick it up.
Will there be fences on the back there to arm those stuff and then towards being wide open?
At this point in time, it was anticipated that they would remain open.
Well, there's no privacy.
One person at a time, please. Okay. Sir?
I'm Kevin, home building 21 Lindberg Street. So I'm looking on this map here. I had it shows a total width of it, roughly 130 feet. So if you're 50 feet from both edges of the property, how is he gonna get a road in there and a house when we're leaving 30 feet?
The buffer doesn't apply to the egress of the property. The buffer doesn't apply to the roadway to the property. It does apply to the buildings 50 feet behind it, the sides. And in this case, it should be in the front as well, even though they're trying to use the driveway to defeat that. So there's some issues.
So it's 130 feet roughly. I mean, it's wider, so the thinner part, actually where 11 Lindberg Street is, as this butter pointed out, it's way more narrow there. I don't know how you can make a 90-degree turn with the fire department personally, but you have the width of the road and a 90-degree turn and it doesn't hit 130 feet until you get past. It's like to me, oh, my head is 21 Lindberg. I mean, unless I'm, if you could explain that to me. Also, to be fair, to address, there is a duplex there, but it does follow the current R2 rules. The property was being rented until the trailer was removed, so it's not just, so they're within home. It's not just, like, again, I have property in Illinois, I can't sell. I mean, there's concerns there. When you build. When you build, how do you get a fire hydrant there? They can't, so the fire hydrant, I'm not an architect, but you're gonna have to have water that trucks are gonna be heavy and heavy that are gonna drive over that, correct? So it's not just like running a water line. I get like a single-family dwelling, it's a beautiful piece of property and I hope that that's one. But how do you get a fire hydrant through there plus signal? I mean, and you have to drive on it. Oh, no, no. Yeah, I'll pause that for now, but those are just discussion time.
So, I mean, we'd have to measure this exactly, but I believe the dimension that you're following is 130-something is probably closer to 150s.
Okay, I think it's not square, but it's.
Yeah, I believe that's closer to 150, if that's the dimension you're looking at. And in terms of the fire hydrant, honestly, that's a civil engineer's scope, so we would have to engage them and discuss that for their after preliminary review.
So all of the housing doesn't have enough, it's two acres, but roughly one acre doesn't have, it looks like, doesn't have 150 feet of wood, right? So you're only really talking about half of that tree.
I think, like, what I was trying to say is how do you have enough space between the 150 feet, but there's 50-foot buffer?
So I was basically, now, we kind of go close a little bit because I believe they, I heard four duplexes. But we're not only talking about two, I'm.
No, they have three plans. They have one for four, another for three, and another for two.
Okay, that's how, okay.
Yeah, I do look this, but this is one that has four footprints on it.
Yeah, but we don't, so that, but the four is out, correct?
There's nothing that's not out, there's nothing that's in. They're just throwing ideas out.
I thought you said we weren't, four was a no.
I voiced my own opinion that I don't like the four and I don't like the three, maybe I like the two.
I'm just trying to understand that. Earlier in the meeting, I thought you said four is a no reason, but I misunderstood you there. So I wanted to see what we're talking about because the structure of the property. You know, the water running and stuff, I think it was her concern, but.
So there is an option with three footprints and, I mean, starting here, this one would stay in the same exact spot as the four option, but in each option, all we're doing is just shortening the road and eliminating one footprint.
That road is a 90-degree turn, correct?
Correct.
So, excuse me, so can you help me, like, I do math, but can you help me on, when you do that turn, anytime you make a 90-degree turn, that divides the capability by a certain, correct?
I mean, it's no different than a typical four corners in a downtown area. Those are all 90-degree turns as well. And we're following the requirements of the subdivision regulations.
Well, I, yeah, I'd just like to see the map. So what size of fire, fire truck would we require to handle this, that type of amount of housing? How big of a vehicle is that?
I don't know what size fire truck, but we did check with the fire chief before we put this together and this width was okay with him.
This was approved by the fire chief?
Not this plant, I'm saying the width of the access was okay with him.
Well, the access, but not the corner. Could you, could you just add a corner?
We did not specifically talk about a 90-degree corner, but 90 degrees was actually required in the subdivision regulations. It was, it was part of the language that we looked at when we looked at.
Yeah, I'm just trying, like, it's not like a, I believe the gentleman discovered, like, just talk about a horseshoe or some sort of car ramp. So that's probably large, yeah. That is, that is small, yeah. And so I'm assuming it would be, I'm not a fire attorney, but I'm assuming that's a big vehicle that's gonna go through there potentially. Also, right across that 11 Lindbergh is a family with children. Like, that's a handful of children.
Rightly across, we're pointing to the road.
So they put up a fence.
We eat it.
Yeah, 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 I love the kids, but they're all over it. Yeah, they're all over the place now.
Is the condo gonna, like, the complex gonna be basically like signage as well? Like advertising this is blank, blank condominiums?
Honestly, that hasn't been discussed with the ownership team yet.
And then is there anything that's gonna be done to kind of almost improve the integrity of Lindbergh Street? Because all these construction vehicles going down is gonna tear it up even more. I mean, we're, we have like a 90-degree slope just going from our house down the street. So maybe potentially doing that to kind of make the neighbors a little happy and that kind of thing. Because it's rough and it's narrow, too. I mean, it's a dead-end road, it's been that way for years. So it's not built for the traffic of 20 cars coming in and out.
I think with any development, there's always the chance that whoever develops this will have to fix some of these areas as, as the work is ongoing. And that's usually up to their request of the town, I believe.
Okay.
What's the proposed, because we have R2 rules, but what's the proposal this under?
Flexible development.
Yeah, so are these per se?
That's acceptable.
Or property?
Yes.
So how can that be flexible, I'm sure, with this property? It sounds like a more like.
I think maybe flexible development is being confused with affordable housing. They're kind of different things.
Okay, so flexible, this isn't affordable. We're talking about making money, we're not talking about people in need.
This is not.
All right, now we're going off track.
I, I, everyone understands, well, I'm just trying to understand, what kind of flexible housing? So I can just clarify.
All right, go ahead.
So Elizabeth Lyon can meet up with us, I'm here for the board as council. Flexible development is a section of the bylaw separate from the subdivision regulations. And they will be required to apply for a special permit in order to have the flexible development that they're asking for granted as part of this subdivision. So it's just a portion of the bylaws that allows for more flexibility under certain circumstances.
To make money via, I mean.
Well, if they're asking for waivers, it has to go through a special permit process and they have to meet certain criteria in the bylaw. So that's what flexible development is. And they'll have to apply for a special permit in order to get that as part of this subdivision.
I'm curious, when did the town adopt flexible zoning? Because this didn't seem to be a possibility when this came up 20 years ago. So when did, when was this adopted by the town?
Probably right around then. Before I was on the plane aboard, so. Sir?
Jerry Seattle, I'm on 15 Lindbergh Street. We're talking about footages and frontage factors everybody's been hitting on. I don't know what's changed throughout the footage. This was in, at the board meetings 10 years ago, 2006, and was rejected for not having proper frontage for two single families. Brandon horseshoe law, I guess was the question. But it didn't meet the criteria then, however. Well, I got something that was shown different. So they, what I'm getting at is, what has changed footage-wise and everything, with the exception of when a, in, adopt this flex zoning instead? I mean, we, you folks are here to protect the zoning and the public. But if we're gonna keep moving the goalposts, changing the laws and rules to accommodate everything, you know, I don't know why we have zoning. Why did we adopt zoning regulations if, like, we're asking, this flex thing is gonna let anybody do what they want? And I know that's the next level, it's the next step for the procedure here, but I'm just bringing that up at this point, all right? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You just said that there are any stolen units? Will there be HOA with us or individual ownership or half backyard? Because it looks like both tenants in one unit will share in the same backyard.
It's a great question. Ownership team hasn't fully decided that yet. It sounds like, you know, we could go back away with the project, but it sounds like what would probably be simpler is having the ownership maintain the area that is not the condo lots. And then the two owners of the condos would share the roof and the land maintenance and then they would own their own individual units.
My concern is two of your buildings are in my total backyard. So my whole backyard is two buildings. And if there's 50 feet, you said, of gap between us, there's no fences, I'm gonna have their stuff along my backyard. If it's very windy, my whole thing is all wide open. You cut trees down, the wind comes through there. So there's no HOA, they can do whatever they want, put anything in the woods, like, because I've been there 27 years, that one's clean, there's nothing in there. We don't dump trash in there, we don't dump old furniture back there. So my concern is no HOA and they own that, are they gonna just say, oh, it's the woods, we're gonna dump it in there?
So.
Because you're not gonna cut all those trees down between my house and your property.
That's fair. That's, that's a, that's a fair answer.
But yeah, if I'm concerned of, you're gonna sell these individual units, they own them, they can do what they want. But there's a house 50 yards away and I live on a quarter acre property. I don't want anyone's trash being thrown in the backwoods and I can see it. That's why I don't understand why the buildings are at the opposite side, because there's nobody back there. These are all, two buildings or three buildings are two actually behind my house directly, directly. So if I had to get aside, I wouldn't have to be concerned about any of this. And there's no one back there, it's just all the big guy on the edge.
It's a fair concern, the project would not move forward if we flopped the road and the buildings. It just wouldn't work. That's why we proposed it the way we did.
And again, me having a home daycare, I guess I could put a fence up here, but again, it's going to be two stories and it's just, just really isn't something that I would like to see out there. Because if you shift it further down, the playground behind me, maybe, but I'm looking at these two buildings directly behind me. And I don't know if that, everyone has a concern about that circle turnaround. People bring in big trucks, deliver furniture, big long trucks, they're gonna be stuck down there, they can't turn around. UPS trucks probably can make it, but there's gonna be a lot of, you know, activity back there. And that goes right to her backyard and my backyard, too. And my neighbor's, my neighbor's yard has been flooding this year. Water, we don't know where it's coming from, but her homework has something into her yard. So I don't know what's going on with the water's coming from there, but it's coming from your area.
Well, if anything, a project like this would add some more drainage consideration and ideally improve any of this.
Then where does that drain? Again, open that high daycare, because I'm right behind those buildings, right behind them.
The idea is that we would connect to the town stormwater drains. And we have a note on there for a potential detention pond. If it's needed, we have a, we sort it out with this. Sorry, detention basin. It's not a pond. And it's, it's just a note as a placeholder in case it's possibly.
That's the drainage, says potential pond.
Go ahead, Ms. Christie, go ahead.
I'm just curious what type of timeframe we're talking about? About having trucks and equipment and all of this stuff coming up a dead-end road? Okay, an already narrow dead-end road? And then you're putting in your road? Like, what's the timeframe on the duration, not when you're gonna start?
It would all depend on town approvals, but I, I think that all of it would be done within like a six to 12-month timeframe.
Oh, so for a year, we're gonna have construction vehicles, heavy-duty construction vehicles coming up our dead-end street?
Ideally less, but yes, construction does take that up, too.
Sir?
So my property will have a road on both sides. How safe is that for kids that visit my family?
If they stay in your yard, they'd be all set. I mean, come on, we're getting, we're getting off the course here. We're really getting off the course.
This is safe then.
This is, this means right now, this is, this plan isn't approved, it isn't anything. It's just a preliminary hearing. And everybody's like, oh, what if this happens, what if that happens? We're not even, we're not, we're not, we're not, let me finish. We're not even at that stage.
Okay.
And we might not even get to that stage. So everybody's getting all worked up over nothing.
But I, okay, I see a road on, on both sides of my property that will essentially above my property. And I'm concerned for the safety of my family.
Okay.
And you act like, to me, like, it's, it's, I shouldn't be quick about that, I'm worried. I apologize, but I am worried. Are people gonna erase something on this road?
Okay. Anybody else need other further public comment?
All right, so right out of the gate, the applicant has some issues. To use the, to be even able to take advantage of the flexible development bylaw, you have to prove that what you could put there under a traditional subdivision. And I don't think you could put two houses there with a traditional subdivision and meet every zoning bylaw. As a matter of fact, I know you can.
So are you referring to the square footage of the lot that was?
No, to put a subdivision in there and have two lots that conform to our current zoning in R2, couldn't be done.
Can you tell me what section that's, can you tell me what section that's referring to?
7160.
7160, you're the flex. First thing you should look at before you put anything together for a flex.
But if we're putting a road in here, then it gives us all the footages.
But the home, the lockstone of the road in a traditional subdivision. So you're losing all that square footage right out of the gate. There's some issues you're gonna have to work through with an engineer that knows what they're looking at.
7160? Are you able to read that to me really quick, so I can just understand where that's coming from? So base, basic maximum number of dwelling units, that's what we put at the top left of these plans?
Yeah, but those calculations aren't true. You're taking a total lot square footage.
That's what this refers to, is this.
Traditional subdivision does not take into consideration the road as part of the lot square footage.
The basic maximum number of dwelling units shall not exceed the number of units which could reasonably be expected to be developed on a site under a conventional plan of full performance with all the lease sales. So we did that as part of the footage, yes.
You took the aggregate square footage of the lot and you're dividing it by two or three, whatever that is. If you traditionally put a road in there, subdivision, subdivision road, like, you have that, deduct that man, you don't have enough for two, you might have enough for two with a waiver. So say we have enough for two, you can't have more than that.
How is that the case when there's flexible development density bonus options?
That's not, not a matter. That's a word by this board, you can't just, that's not a.
Right, 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 it's all, it's all based on people, I understand that.
So for me, the first thing, and I'm just one member here, is that you need to prove to me that a traditional subdivision would fit in there and prove the law, those current zoning laws, and how many pieces of property you get in there? How many units you get in there?
Including the road?
So I guess I do have some questions here because based on what we read, there's nothing that says that basic maximum number has to subtract the road. It's just taking the total square footage.
In a flex, it doesn't. We have to prove the flexible development by doing, by proving standard subdivision. Standard subdivision, the road is owned by the town, not by the lots that are in.
I haven't seen a section of the code that tells us we need to subtract the road.
I'm just, well, I'm just saying that you're gonna, I'm not gonna tell you how to do it. I'm just gonna say you have to prove it to me as a board member and probably the rest of the board.
Right, so based on what's in the zoning bylaws, you take the total square footage of the combined lots, because this would be a combined lot to start the project hypothetically. And then you divide that by 27,000 square feet per building. That gives us three buildings on the lot, not just two, three. And then the fourth building would come in from the density bonus opportunity if those were proved.
A traditional subdivision wouldn't work that way.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm misunderstanding what the core of the flexible development is, if it would have to follow a traditional.
It's right in the bylaw, it's right there. That's what I've been saying since the first time you came in, that it was a tough lot to figure that out. That's all, that's all, I just wanted to get you there before the attorneys do.
Are you looking for more explanation from us?
I'm looking, do you wanna continue, you wanna continue with, what do you wanna do?
I mean, we'd love to get some preliminary feedback from you. I mean, we submitted the three plans so that we could understand if there was even an appetite for two or three, if four is, you know, kind of immediately out the gate, like you had suggested. You know, the owner's really looking to do something with this lot. Like she said, she's, she's owned it for, what, 20-plus years? And, you know, it's kind of sat there this whole time and.
Was it rented? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And she's just looking to see what else can be done with this lot. And flexible development felt like a good opportunity for this area for all of the reasons that we mentioned when we started this conversation. If there's any further questions, I'm happy to answer them, but.
I don't have any, I think I told you how I felt about it. Anybody from the board wants to add their two cents worth?
Do you really need the fire chief to look at on top of all?
Yeah, I mean, I think the gentleman in the back brought up that, you know, the 90-degree curve for the road there at the corner, that could be an issue. I mean, you do meet the width of the road that they usually want, so. I would ask him for a little bit more of input on that.
I believe the 90 degrees was written into the subdivision regulations. I'd have to go back and check exactly what section. But if we needed to change the radius of that, we can, of course, take a look.
Oh, you got room to fix that anyway.
Do you wanna continue this or what do you wanna do?
Like move it to another meeting? I, I would just like to get a preliminary approval or, or no from you guys on the two, three, or four. That way the owner knows how to proceed.
Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of opposition from the community, so.
Absolutely.
You know, so we've really gotta take that into hand about this thing.
But the applicant does have the right to move forward. But the applicant does have the right to move forward. You know the issues, I mean, if you think you can work around the issues, I don't, I don't know what to tell you.
I mean, we've been at two informals up before this point, and we haven't really received any yes or no from you, so we, you know, signed up for this preliminary review so that we could get a yes or no from the board before any decisions are made by the owner. This is a flexible development opportunity, it, it's all written in the zoning bylaws, and of course, the next steps would be to engage the civil engineer and make sure this is all professionally taken to the right level. But at this point, it just didn't make sense to spend the money on the engineering fees before we knew what's possible and potentially approved by the board.
I don't know, there's gotta be a better way to do that.
This is R2, right?
Yes.
There's no two flexes in R2. On that one, it's a special, I mean, it's a special.
I would, if I were you and the owner, continue this. I don't think you wanna vote on it right now. I said if I were the owner, I would continue this, 'cause I don't think you wanna pull a vote on it right now.
What, I, I guess, I guess I'm asking, everybody knows I won't miss that.
I think that there's-
What would make neighbors happy?
That's what I mean, this plan is just that law, that it's not gonna fly. And I just don't have the capacity right now in my head to figure out how to get it to that. That's all.
Can I engineer agree?
Yeah, I don't think it's up to us to-
No, I'm not, I know.
Well, Dale brings up the concern whether the flexible development, what is actually possible there to be a flexible development with your question. I think that's an important one.
Right.
I mean, I guess all we have at this point is that it, it, we can't spend additional funds on engineering fees until we have any kind of preliminary approval from the board. I mean, based on what's in the zoning bylaws, that's what the preliminary review for subdivisions is for, to get initial feedback from the board, whether it's the two, the three, the four, or maybe something that the residents would be happier with.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so it's not the two? In my eyes, the feeling of the board?
I'm for the two.
Alright, it's not the two in this way, shape, or form, in my eyes. If, if the rest of the board's fine, then go ahead, I just think it's-
I mean, it's going from four to the three to the two, I think the two is the lesser, lesser of the two evils. And I'd rather see two, two buildings back than four. So, that's what you wanna try to go for?
Okay.
Go for it, if not, I don't know.
Okay. I mean, if, if we can get a vote on the two, then at least it'll help the team figure out how to proceed.
Just go back for two years? Starts at the clock. If, if we vote on this preliminary tonight and we vote against it, does that exclude the applicant coming back for two years?
You could deny it without prejudice so that they can come back.
Okay.
And you can state that they are required to have a special permit in order to have consideration of the flexible development, so that could be the reason. And then if you deny it without prejudice, they address that by applying for a special permit through flexible development, then they can come back.
Make a motion that grants preliminary approval for the two-bevelling plan.
Two houses?
Two, yeah, the two two flexes. Contingent on the special permit. Somebody second it?
Sure.
All in favor? All not in favor? It's denied without prejudice and I guess we go from here.
Okay. Thank you for your time, thank you.
I've got my stuff, yes.
Sure.
I can give you mine.
That's okay. Well, you can have it. Yep. I got copies in the office.
Here, you can have it, that's the, yeah, that's the, that's what I said.
Some parking issues, yeah. Yep. Thank you for tonight.
Is this, is this recording?
Yes.
Is there a way to access it?
It'll be on, I think you can go on YouTube, and then Channel 8, yep.
Right, nothing hasn't changed, 'cause they still can't get those.
That's 'cause yours old. Alright, with that being said, Jim and Jones, who's at 189 Park Street?
Alright.
It's better be easy.
I'm, I'm alone today. I'm not giving a hell out of here, don't give them any more admission, come on.
You're on TV now, come on. Give it a whirl for- Let's keep it in one thing, what are we trying to do? They used that big, they used that big word infectious and valid.
So he said, well, I think some three lots we can do, five lots we cannot, so one of the trailer, he said that wasn't enough, and then we find this.
Excuse me, if you're gonna have a conversation, could you move it out to the hallway, we're still having a meeting and it's being recorded?
Um, so, I don't know, getting back to this, there's a trailer here, we wanted to make this into a lot, we were short. Some feet here, so they said, no, this cannot be a lot, uh, we wanted to make a lot right here to listen to a lot, they said, no, there's not enough frontage there either. So he, they allowed this, this, and this to be lots. So we went from five lots two months ago down to three lots, that's all the lots to do.
Well, why can't you put the two lots together and make a lot, at least do four lots?
They just said we're short.
Well, that's, if you add them together, wouldn't that be a lot?
Well, because it's across the street.
Oh, okay, alright, alright. Alright, sorry.
The street and one of daddy's, he was like, oh yeah, we're very familiar with this, we go down the street all the time. And I thought, nice.
So with all this combining, combining lots now, that'll give you all the frontage that you need?
We, we were requesting five lots, they said no, so yes, we're doing three lots, we requested three lots, we cut it down to three, and we said, yes, absolutely, we can do the three. These three lots, which they said, go ahead and do that.
Okay.
But we requested this lot, this lot, and they said, no, we don't have enough frontage for it. So we're content right now with three lots. You know what, we wanted, actually, we want two, specifically right now, this moment, we want two lots, which we always have two lots on my two kids. That building soon, hopefully when this gets off our list. Because I have a house right here, this is one child, and this is one child, that's gonna be the other child. In these two lots, we've always had, there's enough frontage, there's enough everything that they have.
So this is the trailer right here?
Yes. So if anything changes, zoning changes down the road in five years, eight years-
So this is gonna be-
Think that we make these lots to just have it sit there for now, because I don't know if anything's gonna change, 'cause I know zoning laws change all the time.
Never feel it better. So this 189 Park Street, 184, gonna be on the same lot?
Yes.
Is that what they guess? What kind of, can you beat that horse?
Yeah. Can't beat the boy, you're playing.
Jesus Christ.
Do I give that back to the board?
My letter, the one that goes- Yeah, I get it recorded, so, yeah.
That one goes to the Lords.
Lords, yep. Somebody copy this?
Seem like there's one or two extras, huh?
Yeah.
There are too many.
But it'd have extras, things always get lost. I know, well, that would be too, too many.
Wonderful, thank you guys so much.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
Uh, A and R, Craig Silvio, 25 Born Street. Alright, so what's going on down there, Craig?
Finding a parcel of the car.
Yep. Okay, so is that gonna give you the hundred ten?
This will give us a little more than a hundred ten.
Okay. Big parcel of land, what the? About seven acres. Easy come, easy go. Uh, good on you, uh, tomorrow, tomorrow, something to eat.
We do it together. I think we'll just turn the page. There's two, right? One lot. See? See the size of the lot yet? Fucking huge. Oh, do you have to grab? Miss one.
Right behind you.
You missed one.
Yeah, you missed one. Um, just so the board knows, I talked to Dean Checkman, he's done with the analysis. And he's gonna go forward with an application for the sign that he wants. So he's gonna come in next month.
Okay.
Save it for next year. Uh, Zaylee, you, you say, uh, update on the Cunningham's Equities Project? She's not here, um. Cunningham's aren't here, so. Uh, sorry, made you, made you come back Franklin and the other guy. We're gonna have to, uh, take that up with them at another meeting.
Please, can I find out exactly what you want from the front that entrance there?
Well, at the entrance there, you're coming down Main Street and they, where they poured the new sidewalks, the sidewalk stops and there's a gap. And then they have the curb. And they never, they never finish it. And then, on the other side of the curb, there, it's kinda like almost, it's the same thing. And the curb, the fire chief had a conversation with Cunningham's over it. And they're gonna have to make that curb cut wider, so the fire truck can get in there. So I guess the fire truck got in there on calls a couple times and.
They couldn't get in.
They couldn't get in.
I understand.
And the parking, the, and the fire chief, I'll give you a copy of the letter from the fire chief, Franklin.
Thank you very much.
And that's over some of the parking issues and other issues that he has down there. I was hoping to address it with those guys. And then, obviously, your applicant came in and, you know, you were here, so I tried to figure, I thought we could kill two birds with one stone and get this all done. But since you're not here, we can't do that, so, um.
Okay, I mean, besides what the fire chief wants, I mean, I sense you guys don't want that open though.
Yeah, I believe in the original plan, that was all closed off.
It was supposed to be all closed off.
Completely.
And then it's changed and it's not, and it's back, and it's.
I think we can still get there.
We can still get there, we just have to get all the parties here to meet.
I mean, the thing, the thing for me, I don't, I don't care about cars, but I care about.
You deliver it.
Service.
Yeah.
I mean, you can make a commercial, first of all, I don't think it should be an exit. I think that's bad.
But, if we make it just for the deliveries, people are still gonna do it. And they're still gonna use it as a shortcut, and there's, and there's this and there's that. And if you read through this letter, and most of the stuff, the parking issues down there, it's because of lack of enforcement from the property owner. So, and that not, not, and that not being you, not being you, that's, that's all then.
I, I might go along. I try to think of this. Like I said, I, I personally don't care if the cars go in there, I just, I worry about the deliveries. The guy getting pissed off and I thought, I mean, as, as it is, trucks come in and you can't find where to go, and you leave, and then you don't get a delivery and it's screwed. Uh, so it's been, it's been a difficult, you know, we find some signs that they go there back there, we have a loading dock and stuff, but it's been very difficult. So, uh, what, what was the gate concept? Is that something that?
Well, the chief was, wanted to be able to get the trucks in, uh, there were an emergency, and they got gates for that. And to get to where we wanted to be in the beginning, have less traffic at that intersection, that's a solution. But if you need to have deliveries there, that's not a solution.
Well, you know, it's part of cooperation, I, I'm willing to, I, I just, uh, I mean, can you have a gate that lets people in?
I'm sure.
And no one out?
We could make ideas up until we're blue in the face, but if the Cunningham's fall through with it, we don't know.
Well, I have a little leverage with it.
I know.
You got Frank line of my car, he's got a lot of weight.
Yeah, I know.
So I could, you know, so I mean, I, we can force the issue if, if.
Okay.
Well, let's work together, let's get the ball rolling.
So, does the idea of one-way entrance appeal to you?
Yes.
Somehow so they can't come back up. That's all.
I totally, I would never go out there myself, and it's very dangerous, I agree with you.
They do it all the time.
Yeah, I see.
That's the nature, actually.
Uh, alright, so if, if you're okay with, with a one-way gate, uh, as a concept, let me try, especially if you all got the thing you can tell after the fire department.
Yeah, so we widen, just invite more cars.
Yeah, so the gate, put a gate there, it'll, it'll block off. I just have one other question in terms of his application, uh, you're putting in a contingency there that?
I don't think we need to, if we're talking through this way.
Yeah. He's all set.
He's all set. Alright, I really appreciate it. I think we're.
Thank you.
Been a nightmare. So I'd like to get him in there, cause.
Yeah, that has been a nightmare.
Oh my god, it's been, it's been a real nightmare. Talk about making bad decisions.
How do you know, right?
Let you try. And then you fail. Great, well, thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll try to do whatever we can.
We'll be in touch.
Great, thank you.
Alright, uh, David Conley, 286 Broad Street.
So I was originally approved for parking structure.
Why are you here?
What's up?
Why are you here?
To get re-approved for parking structure, but not, uh, you guys approved here for addition, you have it pushed out, so there's gonna be three tanning spots, they didn't want it. So now I'm just looking to get it approved just for the original footprint.
No.
Yeah, but it'll be an amendment to the.
No, because we went to court on this.
Oh, yeah.
So you guys, yeah, so you basically said, we don't want tanning spots? We don't want three tanning spots?
I'm trying to remember, I know we went to, we went to court.
Yep.
And you were trying to put in four units.
Yeah.
And they shut, shut you down to two.
Yeah.
Went back to two of the original.
Yeah.
So it was all original parking, I don't believe there was any, anything for extra parking or anything?
So, but finished the two, finished the two units? Instead of extending out the addition that you guys approved, or just?
I don't think we improved anything, because you took us to court.
No, you got the, 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 sorry, the board said, yes, so my 30-year, uh, issue with parking, they approved it, which gave me the by right to do the four units. I got terrible legal advice.
Whoa, 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 whoa. No, are you David Conley?
I, yes, I came in here.
Did I, did you go to court with me, in Worcester Court?
Yes.
And the judge ruled against you?
Correct.
Correct.
So what, I think it was back up here. So I hired Mr. Conley, I came in here.
Yep.
He said, if I get the parking spots approved, it gives me the, the four units by right. The other board approved it, they said.
The zoning board approved.
Zoning board.
The zoning board approved, because you needed variance, because it was too close to the other part.
Yeah, so the zoning board approved it, I was told, okay, now you have a by right. And then you had denied him, which is fine. They said, peel it, I was extorting for 50,000 dollars in penalties, but we won't go there. And, I mean, that's, that, it's just, it was, I couldn't come in here in front of you guys until I paid for it. I, I was getting some terrible guys. Anyways, still wanted to do the parking, Jim Stanley came out, says, yeah, we'd love to get the cars off the street. The original structure was there, so now I just wanted to do the parking.
Cause you had a door with garage stand on the side.
So I just wanted to do it, so this is what it would look like, it's gonna look the same. So basically, what the other board approved, extending it out for six spots, is just gonna be now three spots, the original footprint.
That'd be willing for it though.
Yeah, but they said, come in here and talk to you guys administratively, because I'm not looking to do what was originally approved, I'm just looking to put the parking. Mr. Stanley was like, yeah, same, same footprint, make sure that you have structural engineers sign off. Yes, X, Y, Z, I submitted all this, I.
Take me here.
Yeah. That's the original, this is what I'm saying.
Now, where did you get the permit to do an addition?
What, I didn't do addition?
You did addition, no.
So, so basically, guys, if you ever been in a building, they're 4,500 square feet.
They're huge.
Huge, which is the only reason I wanted, I would've done two at the beginning, but, 4,500 square feet is huge. All the inspectors that came in for the rush, we got, okay, well, I would see what, and now.
Cause you had, you had dormers up all the way in front.
Yeah, we dormed it, yes, but they're, they're huge. Coming electrical, taking a few minutes, okay. Now I see why you want to do it. So anyways, definitely two units, uh, the local agents, like, you really, they gotta get off-street parking. You guys wanted off-street parking, because you want cars to turn around there? So basically, I'm just seeking to put the retaining wall where my original garage was, as opposed to another 15-foot out, which would give me 10 spots, which you guys did.
So there's nothing you need but building car?
Right, like, it's, I, I'm not.
But you got the approval, you got the approval for the variance from.
Yeah. So they said, Denora, the building inspector said, come in, just tell them that you're not seeking to extend it out, you're not gonna do the tanning spots, you're basically just gonna go with the original footprint.
I, I understand.
Yeah. So, I didn't, I didn't need anything special, I just told them to come in.
Alright, I don't.
Maybe just instruct the inspector to, to go burn it.
Alright. Can I get that picture?
What's that? Yeah, yeah, so basically, I included, I gave her this whole pack.
Does Denora have, have it?
Yeah, so the, the blocks that we're using are used by the, like, highway.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be.
Yeah, they're four-foot by four-foot blocks, we drop in, start charging, you're signed off on it. It's, it's gonna look really nice.
I'll, I'll talk to the building inspector, probably tomorrow or.
Yeah, I talked to Brother today, he said, um, just come and explain what the.
Cause he's new and.
Yeah.
That's no cheap endeavor either, right there.
What's up?
That's no cheap endeavor either.
No.
Alright, you should be all set. And Denora has your phone number?
What's up?
Denora has your, your number?
Yeah, yeah, so Brother there today, I, I go down there also, so we're almost done with the, the units, like, they came out.
Good.
You guys are welcome to check them out, but.
It's a nice spot.
It's a pretty area, yeah. And sorry, we, I was giving advice that was not fair at all.
Alright, we'll work through it, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Mohammed Nasr, 2511.
So, dear good gentlemen, I am a tenant of 1177.
Yep.
I own an apartment, and when I acquired the license, as a dealer, I acquired 20 cars, 15 cars. And then I grew it for 12, which is, you know, I ship cars also overseas, sometimes I have to print cars to my lot, then I ship it back to the owners. So I'm just asking to extend, I have a big lot, I have a big picture, video on the lot, I have 25, you know, more than, more than 30 cars. But I'm asking for 40, I'm asking for 25 at least, you know, just to help.
Well, the, 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 the first problem right off the bat is, a couple times I drive by, there's more than 12 cars on the lot. So that tells me right off the bat that you really don't wanna care about regulations.
No.
And it's not, and it's not just once, not twice, it's most of the time when I go by. And I'm sure there's other, other members that've seen the same thing, so. And that, actually, I went by this morning, and I think, when I was driving by, there was 14 or 15 cars down there.
With, with the plates on?
Um, I only saw one with the plate, and the restaurant didn't have a place.
They have the plates. I have.
What are they, invisible?
No, for, for repair, for, I mean, I mean, I'm trying to.
Okay, and then another thing, when you, when you came in a year and a half ago, you said you were gonna clean the place up and paint it and do this, do that.
I did that.
You did?
Yes.
Did you use the same colored piece of tape that's, the broken glass on the front?
No, that's gonna be replaced.
Yeah.
This one gonna be replaced as soon as possible, I promise.
Have you gone to the selectmen?
Uh, no, I didn't. I'm shipping cars also, sometimes I have to print the cars from the ocean to my lot. Then I ship them with the truck, or to the port. You know, I'm trying to move our cars.
I didn't hear you.
I don't, I don't wanna be against the definition, I'm trying to be with the law, that's why I, I came for, uh, the previous inspector, the previous inspector came to me, and you have to maintain.
Well, I agree. I read the attorney office.
Apply for more cars, we've been, the same size. So that's why I'm here, to.
I already mentally feel bad. So, cause I picked up three today, I have to be reading the things to build them, right?
This 43.
What about 30?
Yeah. What should they have to build?
You know, I like to fuck them up.
Sometimes a cure is worse.
So what would that be, minor site plan change?
Well, doesn't the selectman have to finally say on the number?
Good site plan review.
It'd be, it'd be, might be the minor site plan review for the number of cars, but then he has to go back to the selectmen to change the license, the, the number of cars on the license.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, just checking.
Didn't they just review?
We did, and it, and it was, it's, it's gonna come to the planning board first, and then go to the selectmen. After, after the site plan review, to make sure that the applicant, applicant in the area is big enough to handle the number of cars that they wanna do.
You can't get no more in there.
Yeah, so.
So say, there's more than 12 guys down there now. Go buy it every day.
Oh, tell me.
I don't think you can get any more cars there.
Oh, I mean, I'd give them additional five, I wouldn't go 20.
I have the deal, I can show you.
I know, I know what it looks like, everywhere.
We all know the data.
You know.
Well, there's a lot of cars that were already.
Yeah.
I mean, just to be in the same side, I don't like to do anything against the law, I like to follow the rules. I like to be in the same side when I have 20 cars, I have, I can have 20 cars, I'm not gonna have extra cars.
I know, the problem becomes when the lot changes hands and the license is in hand, and it moves to the next owner, we have cluster ref.
Yeah.
So, I wouldn't go more than 17 down there for two reasons. It's too tight, and it looks like shit, no matter how you stack them from the street. I don't care, if you put 40 cars in there, nice and tight in a row, it's, it looks like.
Looks horrible.
A wholesale lot that should be in an industrial district. Or if you sell wholesale cars across country, or container ships, you know, or almost into an industrial.
Yeah.
Set. That's all, with my two cents. You gotta, you gotta apply either way.
So 17, I don't, I have to?
You can apply for. You can apply for whatever you want.
You can apply for fifty cars if you want, but then, we're gonna come back, and we're gonna be...
Now, we're gonna hash it out again.
We're gonna be in the same conversation, so, so... I, I would feel comfortable with five cars, but let's keep it at seventeen, let's keep it at seventeen. Instead of, you know, you're fluctuating back and forth, you know?
There might be an overflow lot close by.
So, see, Lord, it's a Denora, fill out the application, and, uh, once you do the site, the set, the site plan review, you can go forward to the selectmen with that, and then they'll change, they can vote on changing the number on your license, okay?
Just my question, if you approve for seventeen, the selectmen will approve it also for that something?
They should, because they're gonna go on our recommendation. Okay, good luck. You too.
You have any new business?
I looked at the minutes, they look good for, uh, June, so, I don't know, make a motion to...
Make a motion, we accept the minutes, second.
All in favor.
Aight.
I think that's it, uh... We're gonna have to do something with Cunningham down there.
We gotta bring him in.
Do you have to call him in?
We'll have to call him in for the next, next month, so we can, uh, address these parking issues and these other issues with them. It's the last month, I got a, a email from them, saying that they wanted to move, start to move forward on the building in the back in Jack's Mills, they had the old plastic factory, and bought some different stuff, and I really don't feel too great about that, until they finish, finish cleanup, cleanup, and Jack's Mills, and everything else, so...
That is a mess back there.
It is a mess, I draw...
I tried to find that, uh, donut, or the...
Coffee shop.
Coffee shop, and I had to turn around three times to try to get through it. That's a mess back there.
It is.
Alright, motion to adjourn.
Second, third, all in favor, tonight.